Curriculum committee to order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Members may watch live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, do we have any public comments?
I have not received any cards.
Okay, then that we will move on to procedural items. And we're in the draft meeting minutes portion of the agenda. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes?
No.
No, okay. I will just note, this doesn't have to necessarily be corrected in the notes, but when we talked about input on meaningful student achievement outcomes last time, I did suggest that maybe the board wants to review average NWEA scores. I'm not sure that I advocated for M-step scores because I'm not personally a huge fan of the lag in time of those scores. But you know, that may be something that the administration wants to consider, since that is a state required exam. Okay, so hearing no changes, minutes will remain as posted. And I will defer to Ms. Houghton about the TCAPS district course catalog.
Yes, we have three new courses. And I apologize that the ACL letters weren't placed in front of the other two. But all three of these are through the Acelis platform. They are middle school courses. We are, Dr. Van Wager and I have talked a lot about that. We've seen a lot of need in the area for comprehensive middle school online to our students. And so we are actually piloting, we've got a couple of students right now at the middle school who are currently in face-to-face, and then their conditions changed, wide variety of reasons. We have two of them in particular who have now moved all online. And we have chosen to put them all onto the Acelis platform, giving us an opportunity to work with them, get some feedback from those students and their families, and our teachers who are overseeing the program with the thought that next year we'll probably expand even more of that based on the need from students outside of TCAPS who are calling us and asking us about online for middle school. So we've chosen to sort of continue to expand our Acelis offerings to those students.
Jesse, are those partly in response to first taking in class, classes not having a hard time with them?
No, the two students who moved online, it was unique situations where the students were unable to maintain face-to-face. It didn't have to do with the rigor of the face-to-face, but they still wanted to be TCAP students. They didn't want to leave us entirely. And so by switching them to a fully virtual through the program that we're already using, they're able to maintain. They're both planning to re-enroll face-to-face in the fall. So, and then the need that we've seen, we've just had an increase of calls to the Compass Learning Center asking specifically about middle school virtual programming. And those calls are coming in from kids who are not currently enrolled in TCAPS, but live in the area, and either are seeing the virtual schooling that they're in is sunsetting, or they're looking at, hey, we know that you guys have launched this Compass Learning at the high school. We've got a middle school student who is currently virtual, and we're wanting to switch them into TCAPS. With like that as being the trajectory, you know, do you have anything available? And so I've talked a lot with Ryan Ranger, the principal at East Middle School. And he is pretty excited and willing to take on the challenge of what could it look like to have 30 to 50 middle school students fully virtual? And how would he and his team support middle school students in that educational setting? And it's nice because if he contains that, there are already middle school staff, there are middle school counselors, like they sort of know that age range and what that not only academic needs are, but also the social emotional. And it would allow those kids to connect to middle school activities. You know, our kids that are online through Compass Learning, they get TCAP student IDs, they can attend our events, they can engage in all those things that our traditional high school students can. And this would potentially be something we could expand for that.
I guess in a very awkward way, what I meant to ask was, would this be the equivalent of summer school for kids who are having difficulty in some of the classes currently? They're not passing their classes, and they really are not going to be held back. Is this an equivalent to summer school?
I don't see that as that, no. But I will tell you, Kristen Studeman, the principal at West Middle School, and Ryan, we are, I've worked with them, and Brittany K., our curriculum director, we will have a fully tier-two support in both math and reading for our current sixth graders next year. So we know a lot about our kids who are actually transitioning to middle school. We have a really robust intervention in elementary. We really don't have anything besides tier-three, which is considered special ed at middle school. Tiffany, I've talked a lot about this. And so next year, we are going to use some of our at-risk funding to ensure we have reading and math support for those kids who don't quite have the skills yet. Middle school is unique because they're sort of transitioning into adolescence.
It's major transition.
Yeah, and they don't want to be removed from their peers. That's really important. And it's really important that they still are engaged and have those social, you know. But also, we know they're lacking some of the academic skills, right? And so how do we maintain both sides of that? And so we're going to run that for reading and math next year. So I can do more about that at future board curriculum, talk to you guys about, bring Brittany, about what programs we're going to use, what the setup will look like for those kids, so that they don't feel, there is some, the kids don't want to feel special and unique, and like they want to feel, not singled out, but they want to feel like they belong, right?
Depends on what you're singling them out for.
Right, right, right.
I understand that.
Yeah, so, no, I don't necessarily think it'll be used for that. However, I will say the Acelis does have some nice curriculum in it that would allow us to remediate, not down to standards below middle school though at this point.
Thank you. Just, so regarding these three virtual classes, since we're now mid-semester, are these going to be students who are joining these classes this semester?
Yes.
Two months in? Okay, and so because they're virtual courses, they're able to catch up more easily?
Yep.
And I heard you say potentially 30 to 50 students, virtual students at EMS. Would they, would that be, I know there's space in that building to accommodate. How about serving the west side?
Yeah, our thinking is right now is that keeping it consolidated at one site will actually allow us to do a better job providing services. And so, and East does have the space there as well. They do have a lower student count as a building than West Middle School. But yet they have the same counselor support, social work support, and administration support. And so we think that they can handle that increase of 30 to 50 students. Students who would need transportation, we'd help them, just like we are helping the Compass Learning students who maybe don't live near TC High. We do a lot with some beta passes and some other things. We do have the vans now and some approved drivers. And so we have the ability with some, you know, setup here too, thinking about things ahead to transport if needed for that. But we are thinking we'd have a permanent lab at East Middle School where students and families could come with a certified teacher in there to provide support similar to what we're doing with those high school students. We just, at this point, we feel like we'd rather keep it a little bit smaller to do it right, and to really make sure, what we want to do is keep these kids on track and ensure that they can at any point transition to face-to-face learning within TCAP.
It wouldn't preclude us in the future though, from thinking about a west side, you know, a west side program. We kind of want to see, like, Jesse came to me and was like, hey, I really want to do this. And I'm like, I don't know, we're just, we're really kind of just still learning a lot at our Compass Learning Center with our high school kids. But there's just so many phone calls, so many things that Jen's getting over at Compass Learning, and Mike, to a point where like, man, we know that there's a group of kids not being served. Take it a little slow, see where that goes. But in the future, could that possibly happen? It could.
Yeah, so I mean, could you, do you have kind of an aggregate summary of where these kids are coming from? Are they being homeschooled right now? Are they going to a different virtual academy or in-person school?
It's a mix. But I would tell you that Jen and Mike, Mike Livinggood is the teacher who's running the Compass Learning for us over there. They've received well over 20 phone calls from non-TCAPS families who are looking for a fully virtual middle school program that still has like an actual physical brick and mortar support that is close to them, right? Some of these kids who are involved in these virtual programmings are not schools that are in this area at all. And so what some of these families have realized is that when they have a struggle or they need some additional support, it's offered, and it's in Kalamazoo, or it's in, you know what I mean? Like not a place in which they could easily access us. But it's a mix of all those things you just mentioned, yeah.
All right, well, we will stay tuned. And it sounds like you're going to pilot this for next school year more fully, right? For middle school?
I mean, no, it's a full, it's not a pilot. I mean, we're going full force with that.
So right now?
But this is just a few classes with a few of our kids.
Right, right. But right now, then EMS is already using the space for this purpose and kind of ramping up to?
They won't until the fall.
Okay.
Not to the fall. We just have a few middle school students right now online through the Acelis. We're just getting some feedback from them and their families and seeing how that program in particular is working. And the plan is in the fall to have that. So as more details are put together, I'll bring all of that, and I'll probably bring Ryan and potentially someone on his team who's helping oversee that to you guys and sort of go through, okay, hey, here's what this is going to look like.
Yeah, I'll just say, down the road, whenever the presentation happens, I'd just like to hear about the criteria for having kids enter that program and what the district's just looking for in terms of evaluating on an ongoing basis for every child. Should they stay in that environment, or should they come in person? Because to me, it just feels like virtual learning for middle schoolers is, you know, it is different than high school kids. There are some pros and cons, but want to reach more kids, but also want to make sure that they're engaged with other students and so forth.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that, you know, unfortunately, the one is if you don't, that there's somebody else pick them right back up, right? But the second part is, is we do have some state guidance on that. So under the state law right now, students can actually take up to two online courses, regardless of grade level, can request it from the district. And so there is language that gives us parameters on when we should consider or not consider if they're a special education student, is that a part of their IEP. So we do have some state parameters that give us some guidance on what that looks like for kids that take two, that really is a good start, a good component for us to look at as we create this program from that standpoint. So when it comes to that, we'll share, we'll share that section, you know, so you can kind of see that. And that's a really strong basis. If kids are not being successful, there's the exit ramp, you know, that's in that language, all those kinds of things.
And I think too, the middle school counselors, administrators, teachers, and things think that like sometimes kids get in a situation where they need this sort of like pause, and they, but they also don't want to lose these kids totally, right? And so having the ability to move those kids into a virtual programming that we still oversee, and we're still able to stay connected to that kid and that family with the ultimate goal, and Josie, you're to bring them back in with their peers and back into the face-to-face learning.
I can see a variety of reasons to go into it. Some kids in fifth grade may want a more accelerated thing and perhaps go into it early. Kids that are kind of struggling, that need to have it without all the distraction. I could see getting both ways.
And you've got discipline issues that are in that. You have everything from kids that are, you know, traveling with parents, you know, problems with jobs that happen. There's lots of unique situations. And again, this is another option. But you know, to Josie's point, I think it's important there's a quality option in that we're trying to make sure that, you know, we don't have kids set up for failure either.
Right, I understand. Great, thank you. So with that, we can move on to field trip requests. And again, so?
Yeah, so we have a robotics team. This is their request to go to Worlds. They don't know yet if they've qualified. I know they're both, both teams are really ramping up for the state meet here in a couple...
This weekend.
This weekend, oh, it's not a couple of weeks, this weekend.
Not just four, right? Just lots of things going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but that's in here for both the teams. Again, that's dependent on them qualifying for that. And then the other thing in here is our academic World Quest team. This year, the team from West Senior High qualified. I would like to point out that we have a great relationship with our international affairs. It's phenomenal. Alex Tankin, his kind of group through NMC runs that. They pay for all of the expenses. Last year, it was Central High School's team qualified. The kids have to qualify. And if you haven't seen one of those competitions, these kids are incredible, the studying and preparation they do. But our local International World Fair helps pay for all of that for our kids and keeps our kids engaged in that process. So those, there's four students from West traveling with a teacher, Dan Rosenberg, from West Senior High, who's the advisor for that team too. So pretty cool. I think that you might know someone traveling, Josie.
Yeah, I think I know all those boys. All four boys. I was just going to ask for the memo, when we refer to International Affairs Forum, could we insert Northwestern Michigan Colleges? You know, just to make it very clear, that's NMC's program.
It is, yep.
Supposed to be a TCAP's program. I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely, we can make an adjustment to that memo too.
Great, any questions? Okay, all right. Yeah, and then I think the main attraction for today's meeting, the learning series on student attendance.
I think just to back up really quick, I think we want to move those to the full board.
Oh, yeah.
But, oh, good. Or I don't think we need a motion, but just.
Yeah, and I think it might go through, exactly, to finance. Usually we put them on consent.
We missed a slide for the cancellation of the field trip, sorry, for the first informational item.
It's on information, actually.
In the agenda, but I don't think there's a slide.
You're right, right. Erica is right. Let's move unless there are any objections or concerns from my colleagues. Move the district course catalog and selection guide and the field trip request to the consent calendar for the next board meeting.
We do, you're right, we do have a cancellation.
That's right, the Peru trip, yep.
All right.
They just didn't have enough students interested, lack of, yeah.
That's a shame. Okay, then moving on to our second informational item, again, the main attraction today of the series on student attendance.
Yes, so I want to start by, there's two different ways that we talk about student attendance through the state. So I just want to do a little definition, and then I've got a mock sample just to, because they're very confusing, and people feel like they should add up to 100%, and they do not add up to 100%. So I just want to go through it really quick. So there's two ways we can talk about student attendance. We can talk about the attendance rate, which is the percentage of time students are present in school. So like, hey, at this school building, what percentage of my students are present? Or we can talk about chronically absent students. So those are individual students who have missed, and this is defined by the state, they have missed more than 10 percentage of school days. So attendance rate is set by the school and by the district, like, as in like, we could look at the attendance rate, and I'm going to show you some from the whole district and from different schools. But chronically absent is individual students. So here's a sample of a school. This is like one week for you. And I made it a school that has 10 students, just for easy numbers, but you can think about it scaled over multiple weeks or multiple students. So on Monday, you've got two of your students absent, the shaded students are absent. On Tuesday, you've got two students absent again. Wednesday and Thursday, you've got everybody in attendance, you've got 100% attendance on those two days. And on Friday, student three is absent again, 90% attendance. So the bottom numbers are your attendance rates of your schools, right? And so for the whole week, you could just, you literally averaged all of those numbers, and your school attendance rate for that week was 90%, okay? But when you talk about chronically absent students, you're doing an individual count of students. And by the definition that the state sets, which is 10%, you have three students, student two, student three, and student five, who would be labeled as chronically absent students because they missed more than 10% of instruction. So out of the 10 students total, 30% of your students are considered chronically absent. And that's where things get confusing. How can the attendance rate be 90%, but yet 30% of the kids be chronically absent? Those two numbers, they never add up to 100%. And sometimes people feel like they should, but they're not complements of each other. So I just kind of wanted to outline that. And then I'm going to talk about some school attendance rates in TCAPs, and then I'll talk a little bit about chronically absent students as well. Does that kind of get you a simplistic view of the?
Actually, this slide was great. When I looked at this in advance, it made total sense to me. Yeah, like if you take that 10% of, on a given day of absences, whether they're excused or unexcused, you're going to have that sub, within that subpopulation, you're going to have some frequent flyers, if you will, and you may have some other kids who are one-off. So it's the ones who are really frequently absent. So thank you for this very bottom line.
Because it was confusing to me as I was going through some of the research with it too in reading, and I was like, why don't these add up to 100? And then I was like, oh, this is why. And then I was like, okay, I got to figure out how to mock it out. Okay, cool.
And it explains how like Bridge Magazine and MLive have been reporting, you know, that TCAP says chronic absenteeism and the 20% or, you know, 30.
And so people think that 30% of our kids are absent.
Right, every day. But they're not, yes. And you've got two days, we're like, hey, you had everybody there. I mean, that doesn't really happen at our schools or sizes, but you know, you know, so.
Nonetheless, it's still important to look at that 20 and 30%, you know, chronically absent, so.
And the absence, it doesn't matter if it's excused or not.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that here in a second too, as to how, and that's set by MDE, and that's how we, and I checked with Sophie, who does all of our data systems. That's how all of our data runs to the state is our account codes. That's even if a kid, if a parent calls in and the kid's legitimately sick, it still counts as an absent for us. Yep, it does not count as a present code.
So if a kid gets hospitalized?
Still.
There you go, exactly.
Yep.
But I would consider that an excused absence.
But that's not, if they have missed the learning for the day, they are considered absent. State does not care on the reason one. There's one exception, I'll talk about that in a second. All right, cool, I'm glad that helped. So attendance rates, so these are really high-level rates here. And I went back two school years for you. Obviously, this school year, we're in it right now. So I gave you two years here. I gave you the state percentages and then TCAP's percentages, right? So for all of our buildings, that's kind of where we are. So we actually saw a slight, that's like, we're talking point two, point two percentage. I don't know if that's significant or not. I didn't run a test and see if that changes a trend over time. I only went back two because really you go back too many, you go back too far and you start hitting COVID years. And I was like, I think we could, I think we've got some good base data here for us to maybe track it moving forward if the board wants us to. And then I broke it down for you guys here, instead of by individual schools. We do look at that, and we work with some principals on that. But here, I just kind of thought about K5, our middle schools, our high schools. TC High is a very unique subpopulation of students. We've talked a lot about that. So I did pull them out of the high school data because they really would have kind of skewed and affected our, that data together, that sample size and everything. But yeah, so that's there. Middle schools are interesting, both Ms. Studeman and Mr. Ranger thought, they've seen this, and they thought, they were like, wow, middle schools have the best attendance. And there's some thinking that we did behind it on that why. But, so how do you improve your attendance rates? This really is about school culture, right? How do you get kids to go to school every day? It is about having meaningful relationships with our kids. It's about our kids feeling like learning is engaging and relevant to them, and that they value being there, right? So it's all those types of things that you see our schools do, that sometimes are labeled as like, oh, it's a fun activity. Yeah, sure, it is, but it's okay to create community and have that type of school culture. It does help with your attendance rates. It helps with students belonging and feeling like they're part of their school culture.
We have another slide, right, on the overall district chronic absenteeism rates coming up.
I'm going to do chronic next, yep. I thought I'd just do attendance rates first, because those are pretty easy. I will tell you, all the research says for what you want these numbers to be is 90%. You know, you're really, they consider you in the gold standard if you're above 90% as a district and as an individual building or as a grade level. So actually, when I broke these down, I was like, oh, that's, I feel pretty good about that, you know?
And normally, I really advocate for a national comparison, but we, I think all read that nationally, this, the chronic absenteeism is big and on par with the state. Yeah, nationally, 30% of 15 million students are chronically absent. I know you're not there yet. I would just say, for future reference for the board when we revisit this, if we could get national, and also, I would be interested in going back to 2019 for comparison. I know things got, they got worse during COVID, and now we're on the upswing, I think. But I think that would be a good trend we got to try to follow over time.
I think I looked at that, and that wasn't that bad. It's on the data that the state provides, both statewide as well as for individual schools. And I didn't think we were off.
Yeah, my guesses were back up to 2019-ish levels.
1920 is super hard because 20, that's obviously, that was that spring where we went out, and attendance wasn't necessarily, you actually see some of the attendance go up in that spring because we weren't taking attendance.
It's almost like we can just regard 2020 and 2021, but looking back at, you know, 18, 19, and are we back up and beyond where we were?
Yeah. Okay, so chronically absent rate. So again, these are the counts of the kids who have missed more than 10% of their days. So here's the percentage, state percentages for those two years, and then TCAP's percentages for those two years. And then I, again, I broke that down for you guys by grade level bands, for the percentage of students who are labeled as chronically absent. for the percentage of students who are labeled as chronically absent. So the middle school principals saw this and they were like, of course, all of our kids come to school all the time. They were like, they're not the younger kids who get sick and are, right? And they're not the kids who are in high school age, who have more of the ability to choose to not go to school, right? That you think about it, these are the age range of kids that primarily their parents put them on the bus or drop them off and.
They're there.
They're there all day, and so they kind of chuckled when they saw this and they, it made sense to them just sort of with their experience and background. So let's talk about attendance codes really quick, as you guys already mentioned this. So just so you're aware, if a student misses more than half a day, that's considered a full absence for the state, right? So if you think about a student going to West Senior High, they miss one class period, they're not considered absent by the state. They have to have missed more, three class periods or more for our secondaries. Anytime a student misses because of a school activity, this is the only exception to the attendance code, because we put in what, what appears on the student's power schools, it looks like the word ACT. It stands for activity, that is a present code for us. That means that student is not missing school. That educational opportunity for that day is being provided by whatever programming they're doing through us on that day. Now, they're not in class, receiving the traditional instruction, but they could be gone for a wide variety of reasons. It could be sports, it could be music, it could be robotics, it could be any of those, those are not counted. I just did a dump out of power school and just counted all of our attendance codes and just kind of told you right now, this is sort of what the breakdown was. I did this right before spring break. I just, I took all the schools and just dumped them into like a sheet and did a count for you guys to show you sort of what our attendance codes look like. What I thought was most interesting about this is those, that 11% that are not excused, right? That means that either the parents called in or the guardian called in and that school deemed that is not an excusable absence, right? We do have a criteria where our schools use that, or there was no call at all for that student. Yes.
Small question. Do we keep track of kids that cut classes?
We do, actually, it shows up as, in the secondaries, you actually see the word "cut" on, on that, like, if they intentionally, that's hard. What happens first is the student gets marked on "verify," right? The teacher takes attendance, they mark all the kids who aren't here. And then that code will get changed by usually the wing office or the principal if they can say that that student chose to intentionally cut class. A lot of times, they can show that because the student maybe attended one class and then left the building and then came back again during the day, right? Sometimes kids try to do that. Usually it will stay as unverified though, to be honest.
Yeah, and I know in obviously elementary, it's not a code that's used, but I know my middle school experience that if we see a cut, I mean, that's an immediate, because unlike high school where they have the ability to drive and leave campus, come back. Middle school, if they're not there, that's a problem. Like, we have, everyone's looking for the kid, we're making sure they're, they're usually kind of hosed up in the bathroom somewhere. That's what they do in middle school. And then we get them back into class, but cut, I think is a lot as far as, definitely a 9-12 thing as far as trying to figure out where the kid is and getting them back in.
Well, high school was Ferris Bureau, Bureau's day off, I mean. Different thing.
We're not promoting it, right? Someone checking our purpose today.
Very seen by today's standards.
Nobody's putting a Porsche up on its locks or anything, just making sure.
No, they wouldn't put it on the lock, see, right?
I would also say that we also have students who do have extenuating circumstances in terms of health relations. And so they do have homebound services, so that is not included in excused or not excused. We have currently 10 students across the district who are not attending school because of health-related issues. And that's deemed by a physician.
And those students would, yeah, Tiffany said, are not counted on our absenteeism. But that's different than a student who maybe breaks their leg or, you know, spends, you know, is hospitalized for a short term. They would be an excused absence and they would probably hit the chronically absent, to be honest, depending on how many days, when you look at what the state criteria is on that. So, I mean, two days a month.
Yeah, that's not much.
It's not much, when you're talking about what you are to be labeled chronically absent. And I will say, and I'll get to this later, there's just different buckets of how much chronically, like, how much time do they say you can miss before it really dramatically impacts the learning and where we are, so.
And if somebody, if a student misses just, you know, say, one or two, less than that half day, but one or two hours of classes a day, is the, is the absence count like prorated accordingly, one-sixth of a day in your data?
No, not in my data. I counted it just like the state does, where if the student was, had missed half or more of the day, absent. If not, they're present. But I will say that all four of our large secondaries, so their wing AA is one of their biggest jobs, is to take attendance and verify it and they do it multiple times throughout the day. They send text messages in the morning at a certain time. If a student has flagged unverified, they send them again in the afternoon. And then at the end of the day, they, they share with their assistant principal the attendance grid for that whole day. Here are the kids who are unverified, here's what I've done to try to contact them and that assistant principal then will pick it up from there and they're looking for individual student patterns, right? And they're looking for kids who are present, not present, not present, present again, right? Like, what's the story there, so.
And that's only at the high school level?
That's only at the high school and middle school level. Studeman shared me her tracking sheet, she has tracking sheets for all of her wing offices, very similar. That's like, that's the primary job and I, like, nod to Emily a little bit as she was at Central with me for years and knew she helped organize our wing assistants. That's what their primary job every day was, to field those calls and make sure kids are where they're supposed to be, because that's our job, so. So our flow, I talked a little bit about that daily. So at the elementary, they take attendance twice during the day and I will say, being at elementary, it's just different. You don't tend to have, if you've got someone chronically absent and I've got Dawn Mormon, who's going to talk to us a little bit and I'll introduce her at that age. It's a different sort of set of parameters and barriers that as the student gets older, you run more into that apathy and self-selection of not coming to class. But we run those every day in each of our wing offices at all four of our large secondaries. They send them to their administrator at the end of each day, they're looking for patterns, they're looking for things that don't make sense. And then we do have a flow chart, our flow chart that I linked in here about. So when do we start really implementing some more truancy practices and procedures with students? So at five in a month is when we start to actually get a phone call and a conversation to ensure that the families understand how important it is for us to have these kids here. We start sending these more formal letters at 10 absences. At 15 absences, we're looking at having a meeting to set a plan. Our goal is not to be punitive, but to really engage these kids and get them to come to school. And then as we really continue to ramp up, then we get our North End truancy liaison officer, Dawn Mormon, who's here today too with us to talk a little bit about, when she gets engaged, what does that role look like too?
And another just piece to support in student attendance is, you know, if a parent forgets to call in a student or something, we get a call immediately that day that says, you know, your student has an unverified absence or your student missed third hour or whatever it is. So it's a great way, I mean, parents are always notified and, I mean, both, sometimes my husband and I, our phones beep at the same time because we're getting, you know, the same message for an unverified absence or something, so.
Yep, and our buildings know too, like, how much time can a student miss before they're considered absent versus tardy? Both of our, that's more, again, a high school thing. And so sometimes I will get that call too as a high school parent and find out that my daughter just took too long of a lunch and came back 10 minutes late to her fourth hour. And I will be like, oh, now a time for us to have a conversation about.
I wanted to ask you about, so after five absences in a month, the TCAP staff calls. I've gotten the robo calls, but, and they haven't been surprises. But are there also personal calls?
Yes, that's a personal call, so you're noticing five unverified, there's a no call in or, or when there is a call in, it's not an excusable reason. It's time for, like, this is typically, typically it's the wing principal at the high schools. Sometimes it might be a counselor, sometimes it might be the AA if they have a good communication with the family. But it is like, hey, we, we're, we have concerns, right? We want your kid here, this is starting to be a pattern. What can we do to support, what more do we need to know about what's going on with, with your kid and your family?
Is that a requirement under state law?
No, it's just what our practices are.
I'm just wondering that, given the definition of, you know, chronic absenteeism being 10% of school days, which is 18 in a year or two per month, if maybe our threshold should be lower, like, three absences in a month or two absences in a month? I know it would create more work, but, you know, just to try to intervene sooner than later, has the district evaluated that?
I don't believe, I don't think we've gone down to two or three in a month just for its capacity, what we have in the offices. If we have consecutive, so if we do three in a row consecutive with no contact at home, then we do a safety check. So that it's, we can't get ahold of anybody on the contact list, we have no call in, we haven't heard from the family. If we have three in a row, then we do involve a liaison and they go and check the house and make sure everything's okay.
And really here, we're really looking at, we know the student's been hospitalized, we've already had that contact, we wouldn't make that call, right? That's already, we know the story there. We're looking for, yeah, and Dan's exactly right, I should have mentioned that, those multiple unverified in a row, usually by the end of that second day sometimes, and we've already tried to make calls, the AA is like, has told their, you know, administrator, hey, I've called a couple times, I got no answer, I tried to text this number, we tried this, we asked so-and-so who's friends with that kid, like, hey, you know, and we, you know, sometimes during that third day, we'll start something about what's going on. So a big part of supporting our students is the role of our social worker and our counselors, right? Again, like, a lot of times, truancy is the symptom and it's not the root reason why. There's other things going on here. So I did invite Misty Warner, our director of Whole Child here, to talk a little bit about, what does this look like in TCAPs from sort of a tier-two intervention and support system?
Yeah, and so like, as Jessie mentioned, a lot of times we are brought in to make those calls and to try to build those relationships with students and families. We can kind of serve as that link and increase communication so that students and families feel connected and supported. We also look to identify and address barriers. So we're looking at any underlying issues or circumstances that are getting in the way of that student getting to school regularly. And then we work with the family and the students to try to find solutions and provide supports and services to help meet those needs. Oftentimes, we work directly with the students. We create individualized plans, like Jessie had mentioned, to help increase attendance, whether that's regular check-ins with a trusted adult or a soft start to the day, whatever may, that student might need to help get them to school. Another thing that our, our team has done a great job of is really staying up to date and familiar with community resources, what each organization and agency has to offer so that we can then connect and collaborate with those agencies and get our families the resources that they need. And we kind of take it one step further and we help to, those families to navigate those support systems. That can be a challenge, so helping them navigate so they, so that we can assure that they are accessing and getting the resources that they need.
And then our tier-three level of support for attendance is Dawn Mormon. She's here, so that's who's sitting down over here and she works for North Ed and she is our regional truancy liaison. And so I brought her here too, I asked her to talk a little bit about, what does it look like when she gets engaged? What's the goal of that and how does she support TCAPs and her role? So, welcome Dawn.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Yeah, so typically around that chronic absenteeism number, around that 18 to 20 absences. Oftentimes, the school staff will ask me to get involved. What that typically looks like is a letter, it's a pretty strongly worded letter that does let them know that, hey, we are really concerned. It mandates a meeting with school staff and myself and it gets the attention of the parent. So it, it's meant to get their attention, but again, we don't want it to be a punitive process. So that letter does have to go out in case we get to, I kind of call it, the tier-three is that court intervention piece. If we have to go there, this letter needs to be delivered to the family. Once that happens, it's very much a, it takes a village approach. So I will connect with the parent, then they will either call me as soon as they get that letter or if I don't hear from them, I will reach out. Typically at the school level, there has been a lot of effort put into addressing that situation before it comes to me. But then we take that a step further, I still, I come in, but I still have that whole team there. So the principal will be there, oftentimes the school social worker will be there. If there's a special ed teacher or a particular teacher who's connected to that student, we'll have them come. The family can bring in, sometimes they want to bring grandma or they want to bring an aunt, somebody who's, you know, part of, part of their family support group there. And truly, it's another opportunity for us to build trust with the family. A lot of times when I reach out to the family, they will, they will tell me a lot of things that maybe they didn't even share with the school. So it gives me more of an idea of what's going on. A lot of times, they're sort of relieved, actually, I knew this was coming, I was waiting for it, thank you for calling. I also will do home visits. If the school says, hey, you know, we've really tried to connect with this family, we're not getting a lot of response from mom, we will, I will actually even have parents call me directly and ask me to come out. So that's another thing that I will do, I will go out and talk to families. So we will have that meeting, we will have an attendance support meeting and it is conveyed in that way to the parent, look, we're concerned, your student's missing a lot of school. Attendance is the number one indicator of student success. Believe it or not, even if they're not attending school in those really kindergarten, first grade, second grade, that's where those habits are being formed. This is where they're learning to show up on time, to show up regularly. They're learning to interact with other adults. They're learning to build those connections with, which keep them tied to school. They're learning to navigate peer relationships. So we talk through all of that with the parent, you know, this is why this is important. And then we set some, we set some goals. We talk about, you know, we're not going to get somebody who's missed 60 days this year probably down to missing one day a month. But I've had families go from 80 to 40 and I'm cheering them on, like, hey, we cut this in half, 50%. Let's, you know, let's, let's try to do it, you know, 50% more for next year. So we work on that and when families make progress, we do, we do do an attendance contract. We set some measurable goals. A lot of times that looks like 80% for the next four weeks. So it's, it's not quite where we want them to be, but we want it to be doable. And then we will tend to follow up in four weeks, see where the progress is. I will call parents and say, hey, great job, you know, we just want to, want you to continue, continue the efforts. If they are still not on track, then we do circle back. We try to see if another meeting would be beneficial, how can we help? It's always about, like Misty said, identifying barriers and how can we help the family? As just one example I can give, it's not uncommon for families, divorced families, where one is living in, say, central grade schools area and one is living in Long Lakes area and one of those parents is truly struggling to get that kiddo to school. I call, I feel that out and, you know, mom just says, hey, look, you know, if I've got a, if I've got an appointment and I've got to pull her out of school because I don't have the money to get her there. Or, you know, we'll see that, right? Week on with dad, they're at school every day, week off with mom, they're not getting there at all. And I would work closely with like the student support network that TCAPs has. We're able, there's one example in particularly, that this little girl was not going to school on the week she was with mom and it was impacting her, it was impacting her ability to learn and it was impacting her ability to connect with her peers. So the student support network was able to help me with gas cards. And what's great here is she ties that to attendance. So initially, she will give a gas card for mileage for five days with the understanding that every day your child goes to school, then next time we'll reload that card for that many days. So it's tied to, you know, a positive, a positive attendance goal, so.
There's a situation, I will be talking, God willing, with you guys shortly after this meeting, but my question is, you can miss. my question is, you could miss, um, a significant amount of time, and most classes build and move forward.
Absolutely.
And that kind of goes back to how do you make up when you are that lost? And you're already feeling anxious, you're feeling detached. How do you ever get to the point that you're actually blended back in as a, a important part of that classroom?
Right, right.
Um, and if it were just like going to work and every day is the same, I understand that approach. But if you're going to work and every day you're learning a skill that's going to have to translate, that's a lot more difficult, that's a totally different animal. Um, and so that concerns me as much as all the social supports as getting the kid to the point that they're viable in the classroom.
Yes, and I can speak to that a bit. Um, we do work really actively with the principals, the counselors, um, what they will do. Um, and it depends on every situation is different, but we do address that because yes, it does impact a student's self-confidence, right? And they, it's kind of that vicious cycle, once they fall behind, they don't want to go, and the more they don't go, the more they fall, fall behind. So, um, what they will often do is pick some elective classes, like maybe it's a gym class, maybe it's an art class, um, maybe it's over the lunch hour, where those kids will, um, be given additional time to complete work. Um, they will also, um, work with teachers on critical skills, like which assignments are really important for us to get this, this student, um, back up to speed on those critical skills and which things can we put to the side for now, so.
I think that discussions happened. Um, however, I think in this particular case, they're failing so many classes, and they feel that there's no way that they can ever get out of the failure. And yet they're going to be moved on to the next grade, you know, there's like a disconnect.
Yep.
Um, so it, it's just, um, something, uh, I'd like to talk to you about.
Yeah, it definitely is something that, and I, because I've worked with Dawn when I was back at the school, um, more closely. We, we do, we have to prioritize, and, and that's a super important part of bringing the student back. We also work really closely with all of our classroom teachers at the secondary that like, the student, we were talking about a student the other day, I think it was at Central, who had missed a, a, a lot of days, right? And it was important that their first day back, it wasn't, hey, you owe us all these assignments, right? Um, it was really important that the teachers welcome the kid back, tell them we're super excited and glad you're here. Don't worry, we'll work on a plan to get you caught up. For right now, let's figure out, you know, where you sit and, and let me make sure you've got what you need for today, right? Like, because having that type of an entry will get the kid to then show up the next day to try to start working through what a plan looks like. But again, like, our whole goal is to do as much as we can on the front end to prevent a student and a family from getting into that situation.
Yeah, and, and then just, I will speak briefly about that, that next tier of intervention. Um, sometimes all of our efforts just aren't enough, um, and sometimes that court referral, um, is necessary. I will say it is a very, very, very small, select, um, number of instances where we do that. Um, I will say also that I always consider that sort of a personal failure, um, if I had to make that referral. Um, over time I've, I've learned that sometimes it's just, we have to look at it as another level of support, another level of accountability, um, and oftentimes there are more resources, um, or that, just that intense overview, some families really do, um, need that to sort of break the cycle. And sometimes that year of supervision, um, that they get, that helps them form some strong habits, so that when they're released from that supervision, um, they're in those, they've got those strong, strong habits and, and they stay, um, successful and they continue to attend school. So, but that is always a last resort.
That would be, so you get involved when, once a student hits twenty absences. What, at what point then does the, um, court referral begin?
So that's, it is different for every family. Um, every situation is unique, um, and we do work closely a- as a team. Uh, TCAPS has some amazing people in their, out in their buildings. I mean, we work, we work closely together to determine when have we just sort of hit that wall where our efforts aren't, um, they're not fruitful, um, a- a- anymore. Um, it can look like, like I said, I, I mean, I have a student who maybe misses a hundred days, and progress for that family looks like it came here for sixty this year. Um, if we're seeing steady improvement, um, we're seeing the parents work, um, towards improved attendance, we continue to work with them. Um, there's not a set, if you hit this number, you go to court. Um, because every situation is, it, it just really is different. Um, you have parent, you have kiddos who are, you know, we have a family, for instance, where, you know, dad's incarcerated, mom's incarcerated, in and out, you know, living with a relative, school can't reach the parents, I can't reach the parents. Could you do a home visit? Could you try to reach the student? You know, we go out and, um, do a visit with family. Student wasn't there, but your relative that they were living with said, uh, he's at school, and I said, mm, no, he's not. He gets up and leaves every morning for school. We had a really good conversation. Um, and, you know, at the end of that visit, the relative said, you know, I can tell that you're not here because you want to make a court referral, I can tell that you're here because you care and you want him to do well. And that truly is why I do this job. Um, I'm a huge, I, I think that education breaks the cycle, um, uh, of poverty, it break, can break the cycle of, um, you know, a lot of the families that come in, that the parents haven't graduated. Um, and getting that GED later is really difficult. So, um, that student, short story, is he showed up at school the next day, yes, very behind. Um, hadn't been to school in some time, but was welcomed back into the building. And then ultimately it was decided that that student would transition to that alternative environment, um, at Trev- Traverse City High School. And he's continuing to show up. So that's, you know, that's a win. So there isn't a hard line. Um, and that, that student hasn't been to school in three months, you know, but we got him back in the building and that's where we have to start.
Yeah, and some of these kids are really in a very difficult situation.
Absolutely.
Because the parents, um, are representing one thing with the best intentions, and the school represents something else, and the disconnect, the kid is right in the middle, and it's very difficult.
Yeah, thank you, this is really helpful. I just have to acknowledge, first of all, you're serving five counties, right?
Right now, so I would like to at least take a second. This is Debbie Schaefer. So I have been covering all of Grand Travers, including like Greenspire and GTA. Um, and we haven't been able to serve the outlying counties. Um, so we get a little bit of pushback there, right? Why is TCAPS getting all the attention? Um, so we did hire, um, another, uh, my, uh, co- cohort here. Um, she's going to be, um, working with me, she's going to expand those efforts. Um, and we both split our time between pupil accounting, auditing, and truancy, so, um, we, it's a split role. So it's a lot, but it's really rewarding work, especially when you see one of the kids cross that stage and you see them graduate. And there was no way that was going to happen on the course they were on.
I'll also mention that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, but I know when I came to the district, the ISD did not have a truancy officer at all.
That is true.
And so one of my previous experiences, I knew it's required by the law, for the ISD to do it. So I kind of threw that out there. So Dawn was the first one in that position, um, you know, coming just four years, probably four years now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, four years, so to have her, you know, in this role is huge of a, of a resource we didn't have. So just again, kudos and thanks to the ISD for that support, and awesome to see there's even more, um, because it's something we need, but I also, you know, pupil accounting is a big part, big job by itself as well. So they also have that on their plate, um, so it's just really thankful to have some support with this that we didn't have before.
Well, and thanks for all you do. I mean, I can just tell your passion for, like you said, even if it's one kid walking across the stage, um, so, thank you.
Yeah, and it's a fine line you're walking, right? Compassion and this is the law and we need you in school, so.
That's right. And I will just say, having worked with Dawn firsthand on a couple of different cases throughout the years, she works tirelessly, and I know the truancy piece plus the, all the pupil accounting stuff, it's a huge job, so you do it well.
I know our mental health team is super thankful for you and your coordination efforts and collaboration with all of us too, so, thank you.
She's very much in the background of all the buildings too. When I was talking to Dawn about this, she was like, oh yeah, and then I was talking to Brian K about this student, and then I was talking to Kristen Studeman about this student, and then I was, I was like, whoa. Like, she is very connected to and supporting, like, when you guys, if you wonder, like, how does that work? Do only a few of our buildings reach out? Nope, all sixteen know her and, and access her services. When we get to that point, when we feel like it is important that we started the school team, right? At our, at our counselors and our social workers and, um, to support that, because a lot of times we can, we can do that. But then when we need her, we know how to access her and get her to come in with her expertise, so.
Dawn, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
The majority of your students, would you say they're elementary, middle school, or high school historically?
So, um, I would say I spend the most time in the middle schools. Um, I think East and West Middle School use me pretty heavily. Um, I spend less time in the elementaries, but I will say more time at, like Blair, um, Traverse Heights. Um, but they all, they all do use me, um, except for TC High. At TC High doesn't, it's kind of a different, um, situation, and once we get kids there, we really want to keep them there um, and, and do whatever we can to help them be successful. Um, I would say I spend most time in the middle schools. I would love to spend more time in the elementaries, because if I'm honest, the, the, the kids that you can catch at that grade have the best opportunity for success in middle school and high school, and that's where we can hold parents most responsible. As soon as parents, um, as soon as those kids start to hit the, those teen years, um, it, it's, it gets hard to, um, to reel them in, let's say. You know, when, if they've already not been going to school consistently for a couple of years, it's really difficult. So the younger we can catch them, um, the better. Um, and sometimes it's really a multi-year approach, there, you know, sometimes there's a family in particular, um, that, um, a migrant family, and mom didn't speak English, and so we're working through an interpreter. And that first year, this was one of those who went from a hundred to eighty to sixty. And that young man is in, um, middle school this year for the first time, and I just looked and he's missed four days. You know, and so it was a big, you know, a lot of follow-up, a lot of meetings, a lot of calling, a lot of visiting, um, and all of that. So sometimes that, it takes a long time. So I guess I work across the board, I would say I spend the most time in the middle schools.
And I will say that we have been meeting Dawn and I and the coordinator of the school success liaison program, um, and they are in four of our, um, elementary buildings, and I know Dawn had talked about being in some of, some of those elementary buildings, like where in Traverse Heights more. So we're really working with the school success liaisons to be another layer of support in those buildings to help kind of combat truancy.
And to help with what that is, so with NMCAA, we have a partnership where we pay half and they pay half of a person that works as a school success liaison, working with those at-risk students in four of the buildings. Give you an idea, in my previous district, we had one in every building, high school, middle school, that element, that we had state funding for. We didn't have it at all, so we managed, we managed to get four here and put them in four of our more buildings that have at-risk students, but it is an awesome strategy to do, but you need the at-risk funds to be able to match the half that they get to be able to try and expand that. And we've barely been able to do what we've been able to do with the at-risk funds.
Is that the federal Title I, or was that the?
No, state, that's the state thirty-one A, which we know where we're at with that right now, but, you know, this, it's an awesome program of that's exactly what these people do, is help with that intervention with the families with that work, so. In the elementary schools, it's that majority of that family connection, right? Because a kid can't. I see that morphing, right, when I was at Westwoods and worked with elementaries and working a lot with families with truancy. And then as that moved, as I, you know, went to East Middle and was in meetings with Dawn, and that, that focus then turns more to the student and them choosing as far as coming to school or not. Elementary, there is a choice there, but as a parent he goes, that's their focus, and that's what the NMCAA, that wraparound service where they create that relationship with the family helps a ton.
Yeah, and we do try to, um, include those students in those meetings as well. Um, we do have the student, and of course, when they're little, we're talking to them at a, you know, in a different way, but, um, also, uh, having them take part in signing off on that contract and understanding what the goals are and that they're, they have a, a role in that. Um, and just one other thing that is a preventive, um, uh, program that I, I do, I do work all year in the summer is the lighter time. So I will ask all of the schools for, um, names of families where they're not on my caseload yet, but they're concerned about them, and I do use that summer, we kind of, we send out a letter, a soft letter that just says, hey, we noticed you struggled with attendance this year, we're going to be reaching out to see how we can support you, um, and, and be ready to go, uh, at the beginning of the school year. Um, so that, I do do that, and if I can't reach families, I will kind of make a list and I'll go do a roadshow and I'll knock on doors and, you know, just see what we can do, what we can do to help. And like I said, sometimes parents just, they just need that support, they just need somebody to sort of talk to and encourage them. Um, a lot of times they're, I hate to say this, but a lot of times it's basic parenting skills and, and just helping with routines and, and things like that.
Well, thanks, this has really been helpful, and I know it's not the, the end of the conversation for us, um, as a administration and board, but, um, just a couple of things I wanted to ask. One is the, do you have data to track, you know, the causes of absenteeism for given families? And then, like, what approaches you're employing and then the effectiveness to see improvements for, which I understand are variable from student to student, but just so you can do an evaluation maybe in the summertime of what's working well, what's not working so well, what, what other things could we do? I guess my second related question would be, if there's one thing that you, one or two or three, whatever you choose, things that you feel like would really move the ball forward, given existing resources. We always hope for more, but just given what we have, um, fiscally, you know, what would those one or two or three items be for, you know, even for boosting the, reducing chronic absenteeism?
Yeah, um, so I would not say I have, um, specific, that I track specific reasons. Um, and I would say that that's because it's rarely one reason. Um, usually it's a whole bundle of, of, of things, um, and we work on, on, on those things individually. Um, I would, if, if you want to know some of the, the bigger things, I, I do think it's just, um, parents, uh, there's a lot of electronic use, parents are really struggling with taking that away from kids at night. Um, that's a huge one. Uh, some of the transportation, I do find that, um, I've worked with the student support network and they can help, uh, in that regard. It's not something I would say I, I can't track, I certainly, um, I certainly can. Um, we have sort of a little list, and what I find is most of the time you're checking most of the boxes. Um, it's not just, uh, it's usually not really a cut and dry one, one reason. Um, and as far as what I, some things I think would help, it would be awesome to have, um, I have zero budget. So when you're ta-
FTE.
And, um, so the, and, and I can get, um, I can get help. Um, so for TCAPS, oftentimes, um, the student support network, and I have to plug Katie, she is the best. Um, I work with her, um, a lot, and, um, I'm able to get some things from her, but one of the things that would be really helpful particularly for some of those middle school kids are incentives, um, which if I want to do, I have to do that out of my pocket, which we're not allowed to do. So, um, you know, just little things, yeah, you know, like Starbucks cards or things like that, that motivates a kid. And I'll have principals say, if you come to school every day, I will, you know, buy you lunch, or. So, and, but all of that comes, right, out of us just wanting to do that. Um, this, the, um, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Department though also helps me a lot. Um, so for some of the schools where I can't tap into the student support network and we need bus passes or gas cards or things like that, um, I also work with them and they're really good. Um, if I find that somebody has a need that we can't help with, I'll go to them. If I find that somebody has a need that we can't help with, I'll go to them and they'll help me. Um but I think just some of those incentives, like some rewards, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. And then just the last slide, because then I started wondering, how do our kids do who are chronic, chronically absent? Which by the way, is a really hard question for me to figure out how I could put hard data to that. So here's what I could do is I just dumped uh both, all three of our high schools' semester one grades into a spreadsheet with their attendance. Um and then I just sort of categorized them, um that first column, a hundred to ninety percent. That is, that's the majority of our high school students, right? Sixty-five-ish, sixty to sixty-five percent of our high school students fall into that category. They actually are not chronically absent, they attended lots of schools, there's their GPA. And there's the average number of courses that that group of students fell, or sorry, that they, that they failed. The next bucket, and the reason why I chose thirty, seventy percent to cut it off is when you look at the research about students who are chronically absent, they put them in categories, the state does too, Dawn's probably, like it, it is to how many days they miss. I know they say it's defined at ten percent, but you actually don't really see a significant drop off, we still don't, we want kids there, um until you get to those later categories, which means you've missed over thirty percent or more of the school. So that red line right there is like, okay, how about like, if I use that kind of as the cut, the next category, um what does that look like? So you can see the average GPA, if I miss, um if I'm, I'm still chronically absent, right? But I haven't missed more than thirty percent of my schooling, the GPA is lower and I've probably failed more classes, right? But then look at what happens in that next category, right? So that next category, I have missed um a significant amount of my school, not half of them, but a pretty significant amount. Um I will tell you, there are not very many kids, I wish I would have put how many students that were in these categories for you. There are, it's less than ten percent who are past that seventy percent in TCAPs from first semester. Um and then when you go past half of the days, and it was a small number, very small number of students who missed more than fifty percent of the school, weren't already maybe on um a homebound plan or something like that, there's their GPA. And not surprisingly, that's the average number of courses they failed. Now, there are a few kids, there, there's not many in that category, there are a few that have extenuating circumstances that passed all their classes. And I knew they were working through something or they were, oh, they missed that much because they're on a travel hockey team and this is the arrangement that. And that, those are kind of outliers in the other direction, right? With like um that, so I was actually surprised that the average wasn't closer to six, right? Cause six classes is what a high school student takes, but there, because there were a few of those kids and there's such a small number of students in that category. But I don't know, then this red sentence or orange sentence, I mean, makes sense to all of us and I think is sort of what we've all talked about, so.
And Jessie, you said that um the thirty percent, uh or the thirty, uh there's only about ten percent of our kids that fall in.
That fall past that red line.
Past the red line, okay.
From first semester at the high schools this last year. I just, I could grab that data really easily, um and so I was like, uh it's, it's harder and I, I could dig into it if the board really wanted us to, to figure out how is absenteeism related to um, you know, external metrics, right? But that's just not something that is super easy for us to pull apart and look at, doable, but would require more.
Yeah, I'm impressed you, you were able to do this analysis at this level.
Shout out to Sophie, cause I, I kind of brainstormed with her one night about like, I kind of wanna look at this. And it came from the high school principal saying to me, gosh, I wonder how many of my kids, cause both of them were like, well, I can think of this kid and this kid who are totally chronically absent, but it's because of these sports reasons or uh hospitalization. But the kid actually passed all their classes and still was able, cause they set up a plan and it was, um and so they were like, how do our kids do? And I was like, uh, let's see if I can figure out how to answer that, so.
I think the trick is not getting too far behind. It's when you get behind, the rock gets huge.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, yeah.
So this, so the kids who are missing school because of a school activity though, like sports.
Was that necessarily a school activity?
Yeah.
So it could be travel, camp you were in Detroit.
Gotcha.
You know, like that was what you see a lot of from that standpoint.
Somebody, yeah. Training for Olympic, I, yeah. Yeah, okay. So um but I just wanna say like, you know, even ten percent of our high school, you know, of our high school students, I mean, we've got two large primary high schools. So that's twenty-six hundred students. And so ten percent of that, still two hundred and sixty kids, that's still a lot, a sizable number to, to try to tackle. Yeah, and, and I just, I guess I wanna make a comment, but maybe, you know, a question is, because our secondary students all have laptops, you know, TCAPs issued Chromebooks, they, they have the ability to access classwork and homework, that's the comment. But I guess the question would be, you know, you know, like to best point, obviously there might still be something missing, like a kid can, the most diligent student could be absent a lot and access all that, try to keep up, but they're, they're still missing the instruction, right? And that's probably where they, they get buried behind.
The gaps in their learning.
Yeah.
And the gaps in the learning add up.
Right, accumulated effect.
And, and I would say that kids are, there's a lot out there, right? So kids who really wanna do it, I'm sure all of us have seen it, like they'll go out there and they'll find it and they'll figure out how to watch a video or um a Khan Academy or do some practice. But kids, as they feel more overwhelmed and further behind, they, they don't even know where to start, they don't even know how to prioritize, right? And so having an adult, a counselor, someone to sit with them and say, how do we dig, start to dig ourselves out of this hole and make a plan? And maybe it looks like going from missing sixty ki- days down to thirty is where we start, right?
And our counselors are, they are really good at working with these kids and coming up with a plan that is manageable and putting things in bite-sized pieces. Yes, it's gonna be hard, but they can do hard things. But they've gotta show up and they've, they've, they've gotta do that work, so. Um but our, the counselors and the principals, they are really good at that, at, at putting that. It, it's never a situation where come back tomorrow and we want these hundred assignments and we expect you to get from zero to a hundred in, this week. That, that's not what it looks like at all. We, we set, you know, we set reasonable goals and like I said, the school team um really works hard to, to come up with a plan that that student feels comfortable with. And they're involved in those conversations, they, they are, the student is there, um they're given, you know, some options, would this help? Would this help? Um and, and they're part of that, yes, this would work for me. Um and that's what, what the, the school staff will then work with. So there's, there's not just one way. And like Ryan Ranger says, what's the best way out of the hole, stop digging.
It's one of the best ways out.
Thanks so much, everybody. This has been a really good conversation. And I would just encourage the, you know, the board and when going in a strategic planning that we keep this information in mind. You know, maybe, you know, just thinking of our strategic goals and, and more fine-tuned objectives and so forth. I think this is a subpopulation that we could really go after to, you know, really help those student outcomes.
More resources too, I mean, in terms of people resources.
It's very labor intensive, right? And, and I'm not saying that to, to mitigate the situation at all, but it is, it, it, it isn't as simple as like that kid needs a person and a plan and it is constant follow-up, it is constant support. It, it's not just, we, yay, we got you back on Monday, everything's good. It is, it is a very labor-intensive and individualized support system you have to have for a student. And then you're working with all those different teachers and, and what all those plans look like. It's very important, but it's, it's very personnel-intensive.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah.
Do you use the Big Brothers, Big Sisters bridge?
Yep, absolutely.
I would think that that would be a very important bridge.
And one thing that's.
The trust is built.
Yep, and one thing that's really nice about Big Brothers, Big Sisters as well is once that student is participating, there's free tutoring available, which is a great resource, so we do encourage um families to, to take advantage of that. For the obvious reasons, I'm a big sister too, but from, from that per- perspective, but also um having that tutoring available. That's hard, a lot of families know they need it and they can't afford it.
And, and sometimes there's some pushback, I think, uh couched in very um interesting ways that says, I'm not sure that really my child can succeed because I do not succeed. There's some subtleties there.
Yep, breaking some of those cycles, yeah. And something that's really sobering that I share with high school students is um eight out of ten incarcerated men in Michigan didn't graduate high school. Um and so I, I remind them that you're not gonna have the earning potential that you want, you're not gonna be able to afford the things you wanna do. Um and when you, when you can't afford the, the expenses of daily living, what do you do? You turn to criminal activity, you've gotta support yourself in some way. It's, so just that, education is just so important to make sure that these kids have the opportunity. All the doors open, right? Because the education, once you start missing too much school, you don't graduate high school, those doors start closing, so.
I think education is important for the students as well as the parents and that's why we're trying to get some parenting programs running at different schools and bring in some, some stuff to help education and awareness around this as well.
Yep, well, just to wrap this up, um I'll mention, I've shared this with Dr. Graham Waggoner and Jessie Houghton and Dan Isworth, that um last fall, I went to Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference and Kalamazoo Public Schools did a presentation with their superintendent, the president of their board. They have been really aggressive at trying to tackle attendance. And um they have seen improvements, but I mean, they've invested a lot. And I'm, I'm looking at you, Dawn, not, not like you're the singular person to do this for TCAPs, it's, it's all of us together. But I just wanted to mention that um I, you know, what they've done could be, you know, helpful to TCAPs and, and what we might think of doing down the road. A couple of things I haven't heard mentioned were the, not only the parent education, but the um mandatory summer school. So that's, that sounds more like a stick than a carrot. They admitted that families were not big fans of that from the outset, but by proactively saying, look, if your kid is falling behind, you're gonna have to go to summer school, it will be free, but it's gonna be mandatory. And grade retention, which, you know, families just, they, no kid wants to be held back, families don't want that, the school does, the school doesn't want it. Um but that was another thing that they, they used in addition to all the things you've talked about, so.
I'm not a fan of moving kids forward who aren't.
Ready academically.
Ready academically, but it sounds like um from a mental health perspective, that I've heard it's more harmful to hold them back than move them forward. But I, I do think that in a way, we're setting them up for failure, um if we continue to move them through the system when they're, when they haven't met the academic standards of the year before. But I'm, I'm kind of in the minority on that, on that thinking, so.
Anyway, just wanna share that resource.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, great discussion. Moving on then, we, we wanna talk about celebrations and successes.
Yeah, so we're kicking things off, uh TCAPs Montessori students participated in National History, Michigan History Day District Three Competition. Had a great showing, I know the other middle schools also participate in a, in a History Day celebration, so good to see our kids and they're focused on social studies.
Yeah, like it.
A little change up, we're gonna show a little video here um of me. I got to go to uh Traverse Heights um and award the Spirit Stick, so uh, let's see. Here I am, it was a hard decision, that's Brian K in the wig, if you haven't been out there for it.
In furry moon boots.
There they are, yeah. I was eerie. So cool, but that's an example of that idea of school culture, community building, celebrating, um being a part of school and coming to school every day. While I was there, there were some um instructional coaches and teacher leaders from some of our other elementary schools who have there been, you know, watching sort of, what are different ways we can breathe some life into that and do some different things, so, super fun. And then this is a, a slide of some of our sixth graders. We had a chance to meet with a Lego rep a couple of months ago and um they brought in some different kits for our kids and just kind of changing up some of our, our STEM stuff, um and it's pretty cool, the kids absolutely love it. And then they build these and then they race them and, and do sort of those and they, there's a computer programming um piece to it as well, so.
Is that an example of a sixth grade teacher who sought a, a grant or something special, cause it wasn't different, right? It was just one class.
I don't think so, I know that Dan has been, is there the rep that contacted us? We were looking, so just my experience at East Middle, looking at, we have STEM classes in robotics and I was looking for ways to maybe bring some structure to those STEM classes, but also looking at long-term goal uh is how to kind of centralize and build a, an elementary program, right? That's not one-off based on PTO, but an actual STEM K five. And this was just kind of the first step is to kind of introduce these to see where it could possibly fit in our program and kind of have that relationship with Lego, so.
Yeah, and both, both schools, uh both principals came to that Lego meeting that we had with the rep, they heard all the information. We all gotta kind of build some things and play with different Legos ourselves and then they both brought them back to their buildings too, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect age, right? They're still into the Legos in sixth grade.
So your point, the next thing is, is we need to figure out some grants and fundraising mechanism to get some of that, so.
So this is over at uh Blair where a lot of different elementary schools um celebrated March as Reading Month. The Pit Spitters specifically have a program that keeps track of how many uh books kids read and they get a ticket, free ticket to go to the game. Then they come in and they, they brought the mascots in and celebrated with the kids at the, at Blair.
It's a good example of an incentive, um in our community organization that can give us that, it's not something that we're able to provide, you know, so. Um just to kind of, I know this is kind of, we've had months in here before, but we continue to work with them as far as how can we bring that career, college readiness right into the classroom? And so they did lessons in both of our middle schools, um they worked with our science teachers, that's where we found a really nice natural connection for some of their experts to come in and talk to the kids about how would you use this in context to our job and what that looks like. They're doing them in all the grade levels, six, seven and eight throughout these next few months. And then um I, they are doing that as, in addition with the high school students as well. I know they hosted some visits here recently for us on internships and some of those things too. So continuing that partnership, it's sort of operating now, I don't wanna say in the background, but it's up and running and so that's, was great for our kids.
And here's our high school orchestra performing at Eastern Elementary this time of year. Our music groups get out to elementary schools as we start that registration process for middle school. Our sixth graders, uh all sixth graders take music next year, so this is a good idea as far as different music groups get out to schools to kind of expose them to different instruments and, and kind of get an idea of what direction they wanna take in sixth grade.
We had to throw in a photo from Central High School, they hosted the robotics competition in March uh for the district, so next year it'll be back over at West. But really cool competition, a lot of the board was able to come by that, um but great event and kudos to their whole team over there. John Phaler, Marla Gerber, Eric Smith, Jeremiah, all of those adults that helped rally all the volunteers needed and all the pieces that come into making this event um successful, so.
And then these are more celebrations of March as Reading Month, so like I said, many of our schools participate and these are, are some incentives and contests and different guest readers at different schools had over the last month.
Who said on the upper left, the adult?
Jason Allen.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Oh no, it was John DeMuth.
All right, I see Representative Coffee.
From here, it looked like.
It does look like.
I see you gotta be a little guest.
Interesting, they, they have to choose a book, it's like the NCA. It was interesting, you know, if you tell them to vote, they all vote for both. So you really have to say, wait a minute now, you only get to vote for one, then you re-vote.
It was really cute in the library, yeah, Blair.
And then this last one is just, again, another of our phenomenal co-curricular opportunities for our students. Model UN, both of our high schoolers uh brought a nice uh group down, they represent the countries. This is a picture of, of the West Senior High uh award winners, but just a really cool opportunity for all of our high school students to participate in that and um a great experience, so.
Exciting, great, um any other items? Okay, then. Okay, then I think uh, our announcement is that the next curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-ninth here at this location, Glen Loomis Administration Building at eight fifteen AM. Um, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.